I also see beautiful housing and great commercial districts and growth. And a lot of it is the work being done by your partners, by your council and your staff. So kudos to you. We're only as good as our partners. So thank you for being a great partner.
Well, I'd echo what Barb said. I've lived in Brandon for 43 years and I gotta be honest, I never heard of the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance until I came to this position a few months ago. And yet, I've also learned a lot about, and you do a lot for our communities, and I appreciate that. I also want to say, and Tim is on the economic, we're lucky, the work that Dennis Olson has done. You know, to see that come to fruition is certainly rewarding. And I don't think people realize how much is going on in the city of Brandon. And it's continuing to grow. And there's some people that deserve a lot of credit for that. I think if I was at the last meeting correctly, I think pretty much every parcel in the Corson Park, except some of the railroad parcels, are sold now.
That's correct.
And we're actually looking to expand it because we do have other groups that want to come. So there's a lot, and I'm sort of glad all of you get to hear this because there's a lot going on in this town that we take for granted. Oh, that's nice, or this happened, or that happened. And there's a lot of work that goes into it. So, Tim and your group, make sure that they know that we do appreciate everything that they've done. So, thank you for your group and your help.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Spot on. I'll leave you with two more things. One, I could give you the whole overview about the economics happening right now nationally, but given your timeline, I'll say that for a different time. But second, we hold the Mayor's Roundtable. We do that quarterly where the mayors get together and talk about issues. Our next one will be in November. We're talking about some of the concerns with crime happening, maybe possibly next year. And last, we had a mini Hot County Bus Tour we hosted on Tuesday last week. And our first stop was Houston Speedway outside of Brandon. We drove through town here, and everybody is so very impressed with the work here that's been done in the past, today, and to be done in the future. So, thank you for your investment, thank you for your time, and thanks for having a great community and doorway into South Dakota.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay. Under Old Business, we have Second Reading of Ordinance 640, supplemental budget, Page 20 and 21. Questions there?
Motion to approve.
A second. Motion and a second to approve the Second Reading of Ordinance 640. Any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. B, Second Reading of Ordinance 641, rezoning on Corso Park. The map included on Page 26 of the package shows those properties that will be rezoned. They're noted with the LI, which will be zoned to Light Industrial, the R3 zone, and then the general business. The two parcels noted is NRC, well, that's what they're zoned now, and they will change at a later date. But that summarizes those very lengthy legal descriptions provided by a construction.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Second Reading of rezoning Ordinance 641. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Closed. Motion carries. Next item is the BOA Group Home Decision. I will just give you a little bit of where we're at. Obviously, we met the last meeting. It was approved by council. I'll take the ownership of bringing this back forward after hearing from a number of people. Not necessarily about the vote, but the concern with the process, and do believe that it needed to be revisited. So, I appreciate the council looking at this again. I know some of them have had a lot of calls, and especially, I know Barb and Dan have had a lot of calls, and I appreciate that Dan has done it really, and Barb has too, gotten back to people. So, I know it's a sensitive subject in a lot of cases, and trying to be as fair as we can to all sides. And I've asked Brian just to give you a little bit of how we got to where we're at tonight.
The Volunteers of America approached planning staff, I believe in August, with the concept of a six-person home for developmentally challenged individuals. Staff met, and there's four of us that typically go over these issues. Our recommendation, based upon the current zoning code, that they would need a conditional use permit. The property in question is located at the corner of Heritage and Meadowbrook Trail. It is in the R2 zoning district. Single-family dwellings are permitted use in the R2 zoning district. A group home is considered a conditional use in the R2 zoning district. What staff was looking at, we have two different definitions that we were dealing with. One was definition of a family, and I'll read it. There's some to it, but in addition to the persons actually related by blood or law, the following person shall be considered related by blood or law for the purposes of this title. And it's item number five. Twenty-four-hour supervised living of persons with physical or mental disabilities, but not including group homes for drug and alcohol-related rehabilitation, or halfway houses for persons adjudicated by a court. Such residential facilities shall be licensed by the state of South Dakota, and proof of such licensing shall be required prior to zoning certificate approval. The other definition that we were dealing with was that of a group home, which is a supervised living or counseling arrangement in a family home context provided for the 24-hour care of children or adults. The proposal from BOA met both of those. We, as staff, made the determination that they would need a conditional use permit as it meets the definition of a group home. Volunteers of America appealed the staff's decision to the Board of Adjustment, as they're permitted to do. There was a notice placed in the Brandon Valley Journal, I believe on September 3rd, noticing a meeting to be scheduled for September 21st in front of the Board of Adjustment. The presentation was made by BOA, as well as a city attorney representing the city of Brandon. The BOA's appeal of staff's decision was denied. The BOA then chose to appeal the Board of Adjustment's decision to the City Council. The City Council heard that appeal at the last meeting on October 4th, and the appeal was approved. I think that summarizes.
Okay. Thank you. We're at. So, where we're at tonight, this has been approved, but yet, council has allowed that we could rediscuss. And I think the first thing I'd like to have, and I hope I pronounce this, Malle, from the BOA, I'd like you to give just a brief description of what the facility is that you're proposing, and a little bit about the project.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I have a handout, if I could.
Sure.
Thank you. So, just to add to what Mr. Reed already summarized for you, this is a single-family home.
I'm sorry. Do you have extras? Could you pass them to the audience so they can see what we just saw?
I can.
I think some of them might be curious.
Okay, sure. Nope, that's okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. So, thank you, Brian. He's one of my colleagues in the organization. He oversees this particular program where we support people that have intellectual and developmental disabilities. As you can see, this is a single-family home. It looks like a single-family home. This photo on the handout is one of the homes that we have in Sioux Falls that would be very similar to the one in Brandon. The home would meet all covenant requirements of the development. The six future tenants would be individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, would not be people undergoing treatment in a halfway house, would not be sex offenders or criminals. These tenants would be people with disabilities with staff supervision, as outlined in the zoning definition. As a certified community support provider, in accordance with the Home and Community-Based Settings Rule under Medicaid, we would be limited to serving six individuals per address. So, I know there was some talk of, well, there's going to be 12, or there's going to be 20. No, this is a six-bedroom home that would serve six individuals. Again, consistent with your ordinances, as Mr. Reed read just earlier, item number five, definition number five under "family," includes 24-hour supervised livings of persons with physical or mental disabilities, but not including group homes for drug or alcohol rehabilitation, or halfway houses for persons adjudicated by a court. These individuals are a family unit. Some of them have been together for decades. They celebrate birthdays together. They go grocery shopping together. They pool their money to buy things like Xboxes. They are a family. They have their own family come and visit them and celebrate with them, take them for home visits to their own communities. These individuals meet the definition of family under your ordinances, and they should be treated as related by blood or law. I also know one of the concerns, so I'll just address it now, was that this is a business. If there's concern of this being a business, then so too would be families serving foster children. So too would be people owning homes and renting them out to single families. This is a nonprofit organization, serving individuals with disabilities, as defined by family, and treated as related by blood or law. So, I have some other comments, but I think that maybe suffices.
I think that's great. I think it was a good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Malle. So, several of you have asked me, why would the council have approved this? I think in looking at this, it met the definition of what R2 says, and in light of that, I shouldn't speak for them, but I think that this is the reason that it passed, and did not go through the conditional use permit process. And I think at this point in time, those of you from the audience that would like to ask some questions or speak, certainly I would invite someone to come forward. If we can limit each one to three to five minutes, I think that would be good.
Is this already on?
It's on.
Okay. I'm Cindy Weigahop, along with my husband, Jim Weigahop. We live at 204 South Heritage Road, and will be the lot that butts up to the lot that they're proposing to build on. We moved to Brandon about five and a half years ago. We chose to purchase that twin home in the Bluffs. You know, there was only one lot undeveloped at that point in time. We were told that another lot, that would be another lot where a twin home would be built, that would become part of the Bluffs HOA. We've, like I said, over five and a half years, nothing's happened on that lot. I have been in contact with Brian Jackson from Van Buskert's over the years, you know, on what the plans are for that lot, and he assured me, you know, that they were planning another twin home and/or a single-family home in that lot. I know that there was a twin home design submitted to the city. It was actually staked out. They were ready to pour foundation on it, and for some reason, the city declined that plan for some reason. One of the front doors was gonna face Meadowbrook Trail, and the other one was gonna face Heritage. It was a nice design that they're also building in Fargo, North Dakota. I also know that Van Buskert's, Brian told me, that Odie and company had wanted to buy that land and build a fourplex there, but they declined that because they knew it did not fit into the neighborhood. You know, I guess more than anything, we want to know what kind of assurances that we will have, that this will truly be a single-family home and not a business. What oversight will there be on this facility long-term? What can we get in writing that there will not be parking lots with floodlights and cars that'll be coming and going, and be parking, that they'll be made to park in the garage and/or the driveway of that facility? You know, I've looked up kind of a lot of current locations of the BOA facilities on Google, and we drove past a number of them, including the one that Malle is showing on her print. That one is actually located at 701 North Solar Ave Drive and appears to be nicely maintained. But a lot of the facilities that the VOA is managing are not pleasantly maintained and are very rundown. They also advertise that their facilities are close to parks, libraries, eateries, shopping, none of which are anywhere close to this location. You know, I guess I wonder why this lot was chosen, as these residents need easy access to resources, and we're so far away from conveniences such as libraries, doctors, and all of that. Again, I want to understand what process, a lot of that's been discussed already, was used to select this site. Is it a process that is part of the bylaws that could be reviewed by the public? It just seems like the process was kind of shrouded in secrecy. We, you know, it sounds like it was posted in the Journal. Well, I don't get the Journal. You know, I think there could have been a lot of other ways that we, the public out in the Bluffs, could have been notified of this. Another thing that we're very concerned about is, that lot is a lot that was designed for a home with garden windows. And from my understanding, this will be a home that'll be built on slab. Hence, they're gonna need to haul a lot of fill in there, which is gonna change how the water drains into our property. I want to be assured, my husband's very concerned about this, as is our other neighbors, is there going to be a drainage plan for this facility? Again, I want to be assured that there's not gonna be a parking lot with security and floodlights shining. I want to sit on my deck, in my backyard, and I don't want to overlook a parking lot. That is not what I ever signed up for when we bought this property. I would like to see the proposed plan, a picture of something somewhere else doesn't mean anything to me. I mean, that could be bait and switch, just like a lot of other things have been out in our community, which I don't think are right. So, I appreciate the ability to bring these concerns forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Becky Zerpel, and we live at 206 South Heritage Road, connected to the twin home that this is gonna be supposedly built beside. When we moved here in Brandon in June of 2016, we chose to purchase a twin home in the Bluffs for several reasons. It was safe. It was a family-structured area. We were pleased to see that there were covenants in place with guidelines that would be, keep a well-kept neighborhood free of junk property and ISORS to the public. It was filled, again, with family homes. It's easy to find the VOA facilities in Sioux Falls. Google can be your friend and your enemy. After driving by a couple of these and looking at some of them on the Google map, it's evident that most of these facilities are not kept up, and the area has parking lots and lighting to illuminate for quite a bit ways around. They are not lacking lighting. None of which them should be allowed in the Bluffs. This is a family area, neighborhood. This proposed structure lacks belief because of some of the other structures. We appreciate the one that was found that looks nice. This is a business. I have taken care of my dad, who is 96 and wheelchair-bound. I have taken care of my mom until we put her into a memory unit, a memory unit that only housed eight people. I took care of my aunt until she was put into an assisted living that housed six people. They all were a business. They had 24/7 care. There was people coming and going and fully staffed at all times, which this will be. That's not a family dwelling. They said the people will be paying for their own, renting their own bedroom, and if they don't have the money, it will be Medicaid. My mom was on Medicaid. That's low-income housing. And she had a room that showed she was on Medicaid, as the others had nicer rooms. This is a business in the heart of a residential area. And again, why this location? It's not near anything that, as far as libraries, eateries, businesses, it's two miles away. The only thing it has is a beautiful little park. We were told when we moved here that that lot that was next to us was gonna be developed, and there'd be twin homes or a villa put in. This isn't a villa or a twin home. Legends Builders, I believe it was, submitted a plan, and even had the land staked for a twin home. Those twin homes were gonna be on the smaller size, and only two, or double garage for both. That would have been less square footage on that lot than this monstrosity of 3,400-plus square foot on a slab home. There's gonna be a lot of field dirt, and I also am concerned of that large of a home with the eve spouts and being built up with the level that it's gonna have to be because it's on a slab, that drainage is coming right at us in a hard rain. Why was the twin homes disapproved, and that's a zoning committee, when this is bigger yet, and the lot didn't grow in size? The oversight in this facility, as Cindy said, we need to know more. We need to know who's gonna have the oversight. Is this facility gonna start looking like some of their other facilities? It better not in the Bluffs. There's a lot of, we need some of this in writing. There needs to be some better oversight than just saying, sure, it's a family home, go ahead and build it. That is not good enough for all of the families in the Bluffs. It's not. I am not opposed to a facility that supports handicap. I've had two people that I helped support, and one I still do, my dad, who is wheelchair-bound and not able to support himself in any way. I am opposed to an assisted living facility business that is being built in the Bluffs, and especially of this size, being squeezed on a lot. This is a true, not a true, family dwelling. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Hello? My name is Errol Joni, and I live on 1636 West Burton Drive. The house that backs right into the park. While I don't have anything formal written down like the two previous ladies, I just wanted to echo their concern, and also my concern about this decision. I can definitely appreciate the emotional tug of the heart to identify a family like someone that brings together money to buy an Xbox. However, a lot of us that have young families, we see a lot of people walking the neighborhood. We see a lot of kids that are unattended. And from my perspective, I see this as an unnecessary addition to potential risk. There is a daycare that is not too far from that location. There is elderly that live in the area, and to be able to add another potential risk for any events that could potentially catastrophically affect a family, it's definitely not warranted. While I understand that statistically speaking, those are low statistics, to the person that that would happen, it would be 100% statistical fact that the tragedy may occur. As an example, a couple of weeks ago, I had called the police department on an non-emergency number, just to check out some suspicious activities at the park. While I understand that it was non-emergent, it took them 18 minutes to come. By that time, the crowd had dispersed. But to think that, to add that kind of risk, and to be able to say that we will have a proper and adequate response from our PD, Fire Department, Emergency Management, in that location, in that remote area, to me, that's just non-factual, non-realistic, and I would definitely ask the council to please reconsider the decision.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Burkhardt, 1916 West River Bluff Drive, just around the corner up the hill from the proposed group home the VOA is asking us to approve. I would like to take a different approach, if I may. I'd like to speak for the kids that live in the Bluffs addition. I'm an educator of almost 30 years. It's my passion. It's what I hope to spend the rest of my career doing, is serving children. So, I'll share with you that every morning, when I drive to my school, I pass by two school bus stops, each of which are on both sides of this proposed group home. The children are outside, waiting in the dark for the bus to come at about 5:00 to 7:00 every morning. I pass the same group of kids, and the educator and me counts heads as I drive by. I notice the same kids. It's part of what I do in my wheelhouse and my career. They look to be about kindergarten through maybe intermediate school age. It concerns me as a parent and as an educator that they're waiting in the dark for the school bus, but it is what it is. So, when I was made aware that this group home was proposing to build in this site, it concerned me for a lot of reasons. The bus stops are on both sides of this group home, and it is in the dark. I wonder if the council and if the people that are here tonight are aware of the fact that the VOA currently operates group homes in Sioux Falls that house intellectually-disabled people that have criminal histories, that were committed as juveniles. They've been deemed incapable of living on their own. They have been deemed handicapped, collect state funding, as such as a Medicaid, to live in a group home, and they live in these group homes. It's not everybody, but there are some. I wonder if the people in the room know that. That criminal acts committed as juveniles are sometimes, do not follow them into adulthood, but they are deemed incapable of living on their own, or mentally handicapped people who collect Medicaid. That is a fact. They live in group homes, and VOA sponsors such group homes. So, I wanted to share that fact with the council tonight. I appreciate the conversation, Mayor, you and I had, and Dave, the conversation that we had earlier in the week regarding that. Again, my concern is for the safety of the community of the Bluffs. I've lived there for 10 years. I've raised my own kids there. I still have one left in the house. There are numerous children that live in the Bluffs. I appreciate the comments from the gentleman in the back about the park. We are very grateful that we live in an addition that has so many kids in it. It's one of the reasons we chose it for our own family when our older kids were younger. It's a fantastic neighborhood. It's close proximity to a park and a playground. The homes are well-maintained. We know most of our neighbors. We watch each other's kids. It's a fantastic place to live. I can't figure out why. It makes no common sense to me that a group home would want a place, people who needed 24-hour care and needed assistance to live, in a place where they don't have access to really anything that's walkable. I know that I have seen several children walking or biking from the Bluffs into the city. If they miss the bus, or they have an activity after school they have to get to, and it really concerns me when I see them walking or riding their bikes on Holly or Rice Street into Brandon. So, if we do have people living in this group home that need help and need assistance and need help to get around, I'm also concerned for them. It isn't a great place to put this home. But again, my main concern tonight is the potential for people or residents living in these homes that have committed acts as juveniles, and part of their process in getting services from VOA is their criminal histories are possibly sealed because they were committed as juveniles. Some of those criminal histories can include sexual assaults, burglary assaults, theft, damage to property, anything you can think of is a possibility. So, I wanted to raise that fact tonight. I don't know if many people are aware of that, but I wanted to share that. And again, as I was driving to work this morning, I saw the faces of the kids standing on the corner waiting for the bus, and as a good citizen, I wanted to come and share my concern with you, as both a parent and a citizen of this community, and a Bluffs neighbor to many of the people that live here tonight. I thank you for coming. It's important that we raise our concerns to you. We choose you. We elect you to represent us. Another concern I have is that you had 10 days to consider this policy, and you didn't. You passed it without any public... You passed it without any public input from the people in the Bluffs, many of whom chose to be here tonight because we're really concerned about that. These are our homes. We've invested our finances into these properties. We pay a lot of money in taxes, as does everybody else, and we would appreciate consideration that you would take tonight in reconsidering the approval of this group home located in the Bluffs location. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Ann Rankin and we live at 212 South Heritage Road. So we're just around the curve from the other twin homes where this location is. I just have a comment about it not being a business. I struggle with that, especially when she tried to say that it's no different than a parent having a foster child. It's my understanding if these people are going to be looked after 24/7, the staff that are coming in are paid an hourly wage, a salary. Isn't that a business? If I'm a mom and have a stepchild or a foster child, I'm not getting paid to raise them. Yes, I might get money from the state to help pay for their needs, but I'm not making an hourly wage. I'm doing it because I love children and I want to raise them to be great adults. I work at Sanford, been there many, many years. I can appreciate people with mental challenges that need to be cared for, but it's no different than assisted living, a nursing home, somewhere where there are paid staff to care for them. They're God-set people. They're angels that can do it. But this is not a family dwelling with six mentally challenged people who have around-the-clock care and these people are paid to care for them. I would say that there would be a lot of opportunities in Sioux Falls or other areas around us that might have the parks, the libraries, the doctors, whatever's needed for these people to make it an enjoyable location for them. I don't know how this would be very enjoyable for them. There's not a lot to do. There's children all around playing. There's us older people out walking or whatever it is we do, but for them to be able to go out and enjoy life every day, there's not much out there than the little park. So I appreciate you listening to us. I can say we've been in Brandon about six years now. And the one thing I've always felt is I don't feel like there's a lot of open communication between the council and the residents of Brandon. Very in favor of you as our mayor, so thank you for coming in and doing all you've done. I know you all work hard at this. All I ask as a resident is to be open and communicate with us. Tell us what's going on. Tell us the truth. Give us our chance to think about it and voice our opinions. I don't know that that always gets to happen. So thank you again for allowing us to speak and I hope you will reconsider and at least give this a second thought before you put this through. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my first time ever doing anything like this, so I'm a little nervous. I'm going to give you my first name and you'll understand why in a minute. I do live in the Bluffs. My name's Russ Thompson. I had a son that went to Augustana College. He went to college specifically to serve kids like they're talking about right now. He worked for the VOA, which is why I'm just going to give you my first name. For the, yeah. On numerous occasions, he got beat up by some of these kids. Because of that, he changed his career. I'm not going to say that's going to happen, but it's possible that that could happen. We don't need that in this neighborhood. That's really all I wanted to throw out there and I appreciate you guys listening to us. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any questions or comments? Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, may I please?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ross Wright and I appear on behalf of VOA. I'm speaking in the place of Mike Nadolsky. I think some of you folks have heard from him. He's a partner of mine. I work at the Lynn Jackson Law Firm and I just wanted to address a couple of things. Mike is in front of the wall, City Council tonight, so he was going to try to make the commute, but it's a little far. So he sends his apologies. I came to Lynn Jackson from the Lincoln County State's Attorney's Office. I was there for 10 and 1/2 years and while I was there, I covered everything. I did juvenile court, abuse and neglect cases, felony court, MAGD court, planning and zoning. I spent 10 and 1/2 years going to juvenile court almost every single day. So I think of all the folks in the room, I can speak very clearly to the concern that was raised and everyone in this room has a better chance of having somebody who is in juvenile court as their neighbor next door or neighbor across the street than they do having somebody that has a prior juvenile court record in this home. These are folks that have, you name it, Down Syndrome, development disabilities. They don't have criminal records. Some may, but that's not, that's not the rule. When you're in trouble as a juvenile, and I know this because I spent a lot of time, I saw a lot of great kids, maybe some of your kids, maybe some of your family, that just made a stupid mistake. And that's one of the reasons why when you turn 18, your record is sealed. Nobody should know about it. Nobody gets to know about it. Some of those crimes are serious. Some of them are underage consumptions. Some of them are going with your girlfriends to Walmart to steal lipstick. But those are sealed and they're sealed for a reason because when you're under the age of 25, your brain's not fully developed. But when you turn 25, the hope is that now you've reached the requisite level of education and maturity that your brain is developed. Well, those folks go on to become productive members of society and some of you folks may have juvenile court records. That's how it works is you're supposed to learn from your mistakes, move on. But what this situation is, it's a group of people who have mental disabilities and mental handicaps. And what's important is those people are a protected class. No different than if they were African-American or Asian or Latino. They're protected. And there's a reason they're protected. They're protected under federal law. So to say that we're back here to see whether or not we approve this, it's already been approved by the council and then public input or public desire has brought it back. The decision was already made based on that protective class issue. And so that's what's confusing for my clients is why are we back? Is there a chance that this isn't going to go forward now? And Mr. Nadolsky asked me to share a couple of his thoughts. And if I may, Mr. Mayor? He wrote, "In high school, I had a math teacher that would often admonish us with this maxim, 'Say what you mean and mean what you say.' That was almost 38 years ago and I remember it as if it was yesterday. Little did I know then that I would be speaking to that later in terms of an important legal tenant, one which is applied frequently within a court of law and one which I think should be applied here this evening. As a city council, you have been granted the full range of powers. You have legislative powers, which means you make the laws. You have judicial powers, which means you interpret the laws that you make, and you have executive powers, which means you get to enforce the laws that you make." And I want to be clear here. The ordinances you pass have the force of law. And in a court of law, those ordinances are not treated any differently than those passed by the legislature and peer. That means that a court of law will apply the same rules of interpretation to city ordinances as it does to state statutes. And because tonight you are the operating, you are operating to interpret the city ordinances as it, same way that it does with statutes, you should apply those same rules. Mr. Nadolsky then writes, "I mentioned a few of those rules when I spoke to you a couple of weeks ago, but I think in light of your deliberations here this evening, it merits repetition." He lists five points. One, begin with the actual words used in the ordinance and give those words and phrases plain meaning and their plain effect. Two, assume that you as a legislative body meant what the ordinance says. Three, you should reconcile any apparent contradiction and give effect to all the provisions under consideration to make them harmonious and workable if possible. Four, specific language should control over more general language. And finally, five, declare what the ordinance says, not what one thinks it should have said or wished it would have said, but what it says. Now, what has been said by the council relative to the issue being discussed? Single-family dwellings are a permissive use within the R2 medium district. That means that if you are going to use property within this district as a single-family dwelling, you do not need a conditional use permit. You are able to do that as a matter of right. The zoning ordinance defines what constitutes a single family. For our purposes, the law passed by this body has to say this. 24-hour supervised living of persons with physical or mental disabilities shall, and he capitalizes shall, be considered as if they are related by blood or law, or in other words, such persons are to be treated as a single family, no different from a family related by blood or law. I think it's instructive that the law aspect is noted in there. Somebody who ever wrote that for the city of Brandon, I think, was aware of what HUD says. And HUD lists the protective classes. The Fair Housing Act's protected classes are race, color, religion, national origin, sex, disability, which is applicable here, or number seven, familial status. That's not Ross Wright. That's not Mike Nadolsky. That's federal law. He goes on to write, "As used in the sentence, the word shall is mandatory. It is not a suggestion. It is not a recommendation. It's the law." More importantly, for our purposes here within the context, the zoning ordinance says in the same sentence, "The term 'family' does not include group homes for drug and alcohol-related rehabilitation or halfway houses for those adjudicated by a court." We heard a lot of concerns tonight and I understand and appreciate those more than these folks know because I've been in one of these battles myself in my own neighborhood. But we kept hearing, "Group home, group home, group home, group home." I wish I had a clicker because it was a bunch. This is a single-family residence. Yes, it is a business. VOA is a business, but these people are a family unit. They are people who have lived together for sometimes 10 years, 12 years at a time. They depend on each other. They rely on each other. In my neighborhood, I'm a family of six. We have people that rent across the street from a business. You would never know it and in this house, you're never going to know it either. He goes on to write, "At the last meeting, I pointed out to the council that the definition of group home is so broad and untethered to anything else in the ordinance that if it were to be given its plain meaning and effect, it could be applied to a family related by blood or law." Says, "To illustrate this point, one need only consider this. A single-family home that contains a married couple with school-aged children is a group home insofar as the parents certainly provide supervision, counseling, and care for their children on a 24-hour basis. This is not a transitional setting where we have people who are strangers, who just got released from the penitentiary or VOA or JDC, any of those facilities. They're a family unit and they care for each other and they look after each other." A lot of you folks might have friends like me that have family members who are suffering from a mental disability, have Down Syndrome, live in this similar type of a setting. They have to have a place to live and they have to be treated as a family. It doesn't work if they don't. And that's what the intent of this facility is. Mr. Nadolsky goes on to write, "I think that it was suggested at last briefing meeting that this reading was overreaching. I don't think that it is. It's a function of giving words their plain meaning and effect. If the intention is for something different, the words used should be chosen more carefully. Ultimately, it's staff's reading is, I believe staff's reading is problematic for a number of reasons. First and foremost, if you accept the reading, the entirety of subsection 5 under the definition of family," he has family in caps, "has absolutely no purpose and makes absolutely no sense. One might as well take a big red marker and cross out all the language because there would never be circumstances under which that would be given its plain meaning and effect. Secondly, to accept that reading, one must allow the more general provisions of the definition of group home to control the more specific provisions contained within the definition of family. Thirdly, such a reading ignores the clues contained within the ordinance itself. Unrelated persons with physical or mental disabilities residing together are to be treated as a single family." That's how it's written. "Unrelated persons living together for drug or alcohol rehab or at a halfway house, simply or not." That clue points the way to the most reasonable reading of the zoning ordinance, one that checks all the boxes, one that gives meaning to all the provisions of the ordinance and gives the language itself use plain meaning and effect. And it's this, "Within the R2 district, unrelated people with mental or physical disabilities may live together in a single-family residence and may do so as a permissive use. Congregate living arrangements for drug and alcohol rehabilitation or halfway houses may not." That's why we heard "group home" so many times. It's not a group home. Those uses require a conditional use permit. It's been suggested that if the reading that I have advanced here were to be adopted, VOA could have up to 12 individuals living in this home. That is simply not true and I believe Malley explained that. Finally, to conclude, given the respective disabilities, the six future residents of this home are a protected class under federal law, as I stated. They require 24-hour programming to assist them with living independently. That's true. They do. No one from VOA is hiding behind that fact. No one is dismissing or trying to say otherwise. Without such 24-hour programming, these folks simply would not be able to live within a single-family neighborhood, which is the goal of both state and federal legislation in this area. This isn't VOA's goal. This is the state of South Dakota. This is the federal government's goal, to provide a place for these folks to live and call home. By requiring VOA to go through the conditional use process on behalf of these people, you are departing from the normal standards and procedures required of all the others that fall within your definition of family. You're imposing additional requirements and you are possibly subjected to a federally protected class of people to a more onerous and intrusive process in order for them to live as independently and as normally as they are able. He goes on to finish, "I don't think that this is right. I don't think it's fair and I don't think it's in accordance with the law. It was suggested at the briefing meeting that this discussion we are having here tonight was in pursuit of due process. I would ask that this council think about what exactly that means. And in answer to the question, I would submit that due process is found in the rules that are adopted and written down ahead of time. Due process is not found in the rules that change in nature or substance during the course of a proceeding. It's not found in changing the rules during the course of a proceeding because one thinks those rules should be different or because others are unhappy with the results. Both VOA and the six future tenants are entitled to equal protection under the laws that you have adopted for zoning matters. They should not be treated as a visiting team of sorts, somehow different from others living within your community. You have been called upon to act in your judicial capacity this evening, that is to apply law to a fact in an impartial, fair manner. The project here is not about showing support for staff or VOA or anyone else. It's about construing and applying the law, the law that you have made, to achieve justice for those that you govern." You had the right answer on October 4th and I would ask that you not change that answer.
Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Nadolsky's comments and again, I think what we're looking here to do is we want to do the right thing. And I understand that there are legal aspects to what we're looking at and we certainly have to keep that in mind, but I think he's a little bit mixed up in terms of the process. My feelings were that we should have gone through, personally, I believe we should have gone through the conditional use process because I do believe what we're getting right now is exactly what we'd have gotten then. We would have had this same discussion. And so we're getting it the wrong way. And that's never the right way to do anything when you do it the wrong way. And so I don't apologize for the fact that I think interpretation of the law is certainly something that is debatable on both sides. And first of all and foremost, I applaud what the VOA does. We've been supporters of theirs in the business that I worked with. Tom Reeves and I worked together- Tom Reeves and I worked together with a nice gift, and I know they do a number of very honorable and good things. So this isn't anything about the VOA. This is about, and he, Mr. Nadolsky questioned whether or not, I think we should always listen to the citizens, regardless of what order it goes in, we should be listening. And that's the reason that we're discussing this tonight. And I don't apologize for that. I think it's the right thing to do, and I hope we always try and do that. So, I'm not sure, and again, I think we've had most comments. If you have one last comment to make, I'll take one more, and then we're...
Okay. I do have one last comment to make, and he had a lot of legal jumbo that, you know, 90% of us probably don't understand, you know, trying to read all this stuff off to confuse us. Bottom line is, this is a residential neighborhood with, you know, covenants and so on, with the right mix of people that we're going to live in this neighborhood. You know, I still feel, you know, that I want to know what was the process used to select this site? Why this site out of what other sites were looked at? And how, where is the data that's showing that this was the optimum site to stick a 3,400-square-foot building on slab that's going to go border-to-border on that lot, basically? That lot is not designed for a slab house, it's a garden windows house. What kind of assurance, as neighbors, are we going to have that we are not going to have problems with drainage and all the other things that the team has, the different people have brought up here, you know? I understand that these people are mentally challenged, and I have no problem with somebody living like that, but that, again, reiterates the fact that they don't know right from wrong. And just because they've aged out of society or out of the group homes, like Children's Home Society or Lifescape and those type of facilities, doesn't mean they're no longer dangerous.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
If I may just address the one question related to how the lot was chosen. A realtor that we work with found the lot because it was the proper size for the home, and it was ideal for our plans to build. Additionally, as I mentioned before to the council, we do have multiple homes on the east side of Brandon, and so, east side of Sioux Falls, excuse me. So Brandon is an ideal location for us, including staff that reside in Brandon and also on the east side of Sioux Falls. In closing, as appointed and elected officials, upon taking office, you each took an oath to uphold city, state, and federal laws, to be honest and just. In your decision October 4th, you did just that. You reviewed the details, your own zoning ordinances, federal fair housing laws, and you agreed this was a single-family home as individuals with disabilities constitute a family. Condoleezza Rice states, "There is no greater challenge, and there is no greater honor than to be in public service." In leadership, both in public service and the nonprofit sector, we are charged with making hard decisions that are fair and equitable, and thus, sometimes unpopular. I urge the council to remember your own mission, building a better life. Disregard the noise, remember the oath that you took, and review the facts of the matter. A single-family home for people with disabilities, your own definition of family, federal protections for people with disabilities. Volunteers of America Dakotas is called by the gospel to guide people to healthy and fulfilling lives, which is consistent with the city's mission, building a better life. Six individuals would have a new, single-family home to live in, in Brandon, and a community to be part of, building a better life, just like all of us. Thank you.
Take one more comment.
Tracy Burkhart, 1916 West River Bluff Drive. Maybe I should be going as the noise from now on, because I'm the noise. Alls you've gotten in the first several minutes from the muscle and from her is a lot of smoke and mirrors, and a lot of fluff, and a lot of threats. If you can't tell, alls you're doing is being threatened by legal people to tell you what you should do to represent the citizens and what they want, which is what you're here to do, not them. You're not here to represent them, you're here to represent us. We pay taxes, we picked that place to live, to raise our children, and to grow in a safe environment for the area that we're in. This is not a great environment for this place. There is nothing around it, it's isolated. I'm not sure what the reason is, they got a good deal on the land, Van Buskirk was desperate, I don't know what it is, I don't care, honestly, but there's a problem here, because it doesn't smell, it doesn't pass the smell test. That's the bottom line. So, the truth of it is, is alls they're doing is, again, muscling you like they did in the first meeting, to make you all fearful, so you just vote right away like you did. And now we're here to point out to you that this is what they're doing again, and you're going to fall for it again, probably our attorney too here, because it's just whatever everybody wants, and we don't want any lawsuits in the city, but maybe this is one you should take on for a change, because nobody in the Bluffs wants this. We see the problems. What they're not telling you, which was pointed out earlier, is there's several criminals in these group homes. They just don't have records that you can see, because they're expunged or they're hidden. There's sexual predators in these homes, many of them. I can prove it out to one of you, if you want to see it afterwards, I can tell you all about it, but that's what's in there. Not all of them, there's regular people, there's mentally handicapped, there's people that have legitimate problems. Personally, for me, I don't want to speak for everyone else, I wouldn't mind those people being in there, but I don't want criminals in my neighborhood that are known, that can never be corrected, can never be cured, because that's who's in a group home. These aren't people that are going to be fixed and then they're on their way. They have problems for the rest of their lives, that's why they're in a group home, but 24/7 supervision. Now, for the people that need it for management of their own world, that's different. For the people that need it because they might reoffend or offend somebody else's property or persons, that's a problem, and they're in these homes. And I think you guys didn't do your due diligence to figure that out before in the last meeting, because alls they said was, "Oh, no criminals know this and that." What they didn't tell you is that their records are sealed, or that they don't have to put that out to you guys, because they don't have to tell you about what their records are. They're in there, and they're a percentage of what we could get in that home. There's kids across the street living in all the apartments behind them, there's people at bus stops, there's a park just down the road, there's all kinds of opportunities for these people. And a lot of them are in there because they can't, they can't manage their own, you know, impulses that could cause them to reoffend. And I don't want to depend on some minimum-wage worker, or whatever they got in there, on their 24/7 shifts, to try to make sure that that person doesn't get out and reoffend against my neighbors or my own children. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Obviously, this is a sensitive emotional topic, and I wish there was an easy solution. I guess if there's any comments from the council at this point?
So can we discuss a couple of the, so a couple people have talked about assurances, and I'm not going to be the one that's going to be able to articulate it well, but I know we've talked in the past about how there is not the possibility for that bait and switch, or for something else to pop up in six months, or for it to change a year down the road. If I could ask somebody to speak to that, either staff or Tim from P&amp;Z, and what assurances are there on the drainage? The other one I jotted down was covenants. I don't believe the city has anything to do with covenants, if I remember correctly, so that one's completely out of our realm, but I do think that that would be the piece that would ensure that the home maintains the visibility that's desired for the Bluffs. But I do think, I would like to have a recap on a couple of those assurances, because we heard that more than once.
As far as the drainage, new construction cannot force more water onto a neighbor's property. So we can double-check that when we get a site plan. Sorry. When we get a site plan, or review the site plan, new construction cannot put more water on the neighboring properties, they have to handle that in the natural way of drainage. So, however they grade that, and we haven't seen a site plant, to my knowledge, yet with elevations, they can't push any more water onto the neighbors than you already get. And we can verify that. As far as the other assurances, we certainly do have performance standards in our zoning They're more related to industrial districts with noise, vibration, light, et cetera. It's a permitted use, I mean, we can certainly watch it as it's built to make sure that it conforms with those standards, but I, you know, until we see a plan, we can't really comment on it. No, if there are covenants up in the Bluffs, the city does not enforce covenants. That is up to the residents in the neighborhood to take legal action to enforce those covenants.
So they sold it a year down the road, and the buyer was going to change it over to an alcohol group home. How does that get caught?
Somebody would need to come in and apply for a group home. Yeah, there's, we don't have any mechanism in place that tracks sales of property. We have nothing to do with the sale of a property in between individuals or businesses. We don't approve those transactions, they don't come to us. You know, we didn't approve anybody's purchase of a property in town. That's done by a real estate agent and attorneys. So, at some point in time, could something slip through the cracks like that? Yes, it could. And, you know, we would hope that the buyer and the seller would come forward and present that information to the city.
And I'm not giving an opinion on what you should do, I have a conflict of interest...
Well, it was on, I have a conflict of interest, but I just want to address, generally speaking, in the abstract, if you have a violation of something, you have 23 people living in a house, and that's a violation of our zoning. That can go before the council. So, that's just, in the abstract, maybe addresses what you're talking about.
But I'm not involved in this issue, I've worked with VOA very closely, I work with the city very closely. You guys have a different attorney, you can play some of this, I just wanted to address that in the abstract of how things work.
You know, it would be handled just like any other zoning violation. If it's reported by the city, or to the city, we would investigate. And then, if it's a violation, notices will be given to the offending property owner with a timeframe to bring it into compliance.
Any other comments, Dave? I know you...
My main comment is on number five. The 24-hour supervised living of persons with physical or mental disabilities, but not including group homes for drug and alcohol-related rehabilitation or halfway houses for persons adjudicated by the court. Such residential facilities shall be licensed by the state of South Dakota, proof of licensing, so on and so forth. That's under the definition of a family. It matters not whether that location is out by heritage, whether it's over at Fourth and Cedar, it matches the definition of family as I read it. And that's, that's why I made the decision that I did. It wasn't that it was in the Bluffs, or it wasn't it not up in Country Club. Comments that were made about sexual predators, there seems to be a concern about sexual predators, correct? Correct. Okay.
And many other things.
And many, many other things, sure. I get it, I get it. Some of the stats that you can find is that 90% of children who are victims of abuse know their abuser. 60% are sexually abused by people the family trusts. Your sexual abusers oftentimes, they're not Chester the Molester wandering through the neighborhood looking for a child that's wandering around. It's the neighbors, sometimes it's babysitters, sometimes it's, well, grandpa, uncle, cousins. Those are your sexual predators that you should be worried. Who your daughter is going out with on her first date, those are sexual predators. And not all of them are caught, not all of them are registered, they are out there. And we're talking about a facility that I think, by our definition, matches or meets the requirement of family, that also does have 24-hour supervision. How many people at a time are supervised in one?
Could be one to three.
One to three in the house to keep an eye on and to help and assist these people with their life. Again, for me, it met the definition of family. You know, we can play games all day long with, "Oh my God, this could happen, that could happen." That could happen with people that are building houses up in the Bluffs right now. You don't know who they are. You haven't done any background investigations. You know, that's just a chance that you take when you build a house in a community, is that you can have people that move in next door to you that after a while, you go, "Oh boy, there goes the neighborhood." For me, though, it just comes down to, they meet the qualification of family, and I think it's our obligation to look at that, consider that, and make our decision based on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Can I make any more comments?
I think we've probably had enough for tonight. Thank you.
I guess I'll just, I'll echo what Dave just said on the point that you don't know, and I don't know enough about sealed juvenile records. Dave, you could answer that. I mean, are all juvenile records sealed, or just a certain...
Not all of them.
Okay. So, I mean, VOA has told us that the tenants coming to Brandon are not on parole, not on probation, they're not sex offenders, they're not court-ordered. I can't say that about people in my own neighborhood. I don't know, I don't know their background. I did, for the first time in a decade, look up the sex offender registry and saw that we had about a dozen here in Brandon, but I didn't realize that until I looked this up. I think there's a lot of fear for the unknown, and I spent a lot of years working with people with disabilities in my past life, and that was a very common thing. But they do meet our law, and I don't think we can change our narrative when we have a law in front of us. So I do agree with that. Now, I know that there's been conversation that this needs to go back to planning and zoning, it needs to have some revisiting, because we have some conflicts that need to be worked out, but that's for the future. I don't think that we cannot follow our own law. I think we'd be hypocrites if we did that. I won't be changing my vote either.
Well, this is my ward, and I'm sorry that so many of you are so upset. It's a very emotional issue on both sides, but I have to go along with what Dave and Dana said. The law is here. I can't change it just because someone is going to be unhappy with it, one way or the other. It is what it is. We can change it going forward, but we can't just change it arbitrarily, I don't believe. And so, I feel that they meet the definition of a family. You may not like it, it's, I don't really know what I think. I would have liked us to have gone through the conditional use process too, but they did not apply for that. So we're hamstrung here, folks. We have to follow the law, whether...
Why do we, the citizens, have to take the brunt of your mistake?
So, we can't change it.
Barb, you should have told us, Barb. You represent us, Barb. You have an obligation to let the people of the Bluffs know, you represent us, and you did not.
You stepped silent, like you always do.
Why should we have to take the brunt of your...
That's enough, guys. We're not getting anywhere in this discussion.
It's not really enough, it's affecting us. It's not affecting you, it's not in your backyard, it's not in Mallory's backyard. It's affecting us.
Okay, at this point, I don't feel like the council has any desire to revisit or send this back to the Board of Adjustment.
I think someone would have to make a motion to reconsider.
Okay. That would be the only way we can, and that would have to be someone that voted on it originally.
I'll just throw my comments in, and I said this before, and I'll say it again. Although I do not like the fact that we have... Although I do not like the fact that we have language in some of our ordinances that isn't clear, and there are some gray areas here. But to a reasonable person reading the definitions, I do feel that this home meets the definition of a single-family home and that these individuals living in this home are protected class. And we just need to be very careful, the approach that we take. And so I, I, again, I cannot change my vote. I have sympathies for, for what everyone has said to hear tonight. And I understand some of your concerns, but I think some of those are blown out of proportion greatly. But there are still concerns that need to be watched, let's just say, so that in the future, something other than what's being proposed ends up in there.
Okay, we'll close the subject. We'll move on to committee reports. Those that would like to stay, you're certainly welcome to leave. Resolution 2221, setting golf rates listed on pages 45 to 47. Any questions on any of those? I think we had a chance to look those over.
Andrew, do they go up or don't?
Yeah. So the, the season pass rates and cart rates went up 50 each. And then the daily rates just went up either $1.50. Just kind of staying in line with costs are going up on stuff, so we just got to keep up. We don't want to fall behind on stuff like that.
Yeah, and they're still very competitive.
Yeah, they're competitive with everyone else in our market. It is, it's an extremely competitive market for golf, this area.
Andrew, do you know, like, when we get done with, out of the season, I suppose it really depends on when it snows, right?
Right.
Then you'll be able to tell us, because I would assume, like I said this earlier, a lot more traffic out there.
Yep, and I think our financials in this packet at, through the end of September, so financials for, through September in there, they're very good. We're up. Currently, we've done 1,500 rounds more than we did all of last year. As of right now. And it appears we still have a lot of nice weather ahead of us. So things are going well. A lot of people playing. Another reason to raise prices, volume's up, demand's up, so. I, I think for a few years, we kind of, and it was easy to stay, stay where you're at and not raise rates to kind of keep people coming back, but I don't think we want to stay doing that.
Yes, we do. Motion on the second to approve the golf rates. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Quote to repair the flood damage to the maintenance building.
Low quote was submitted by Trump Exteriors in the amount of 12,755,13. Of that FEMA potentially will reimburse us $3,100 with the state reimbursing 416, so the city shares a little over $9,000.
Move to approve. And a second.
Of a motion and a second to approve the flood damage repair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Purchase of a mower, page 5051.
Included in the 2022 budget is the purchase of a 3,500D mower for the golf course. And this would be replacing a, one that we purchased used in 2016. Purchase price is $35,000.
Have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the mower. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Rec have a work report there on page 52. Quote to purchase a John Deere Gator from Pfeiffer.
And make a motion to approve that, may it extend the budget.
A motion and a second to approve the purchase of a John Deere Gator. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Quote to purchase a Kubota UTV from Pfeiffer Implement, also, I believe, in, in the budget.
In the budget. I'll make that motion.
Motion and a second to approve the Kubota. I don't know if I'm saying that right, but Kubota. Never bought a few, any of those. In fact, I'm not even sure what it is, but. Devon needs it. There we go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public safety, we have a police report on 57. Mr. Stifel, anything that you need? Okay. Fire department report on page 60. BFW request for Holiday Lights Parade on November 27. We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a bid to purchase a 2022 fleet vehicle or?
If there's, there's two bids.
Two vehicles.
To purchase two vehicles.
Have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of two fleet vehicles. Any other discussion or questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Administrative, first reading of ordinance 644, special assessment policy. Brian, you want to review that?
Sure. This updates the special assessment policy for the city. That was, the latest version was 1987. This mimics pretty much state law as far as the process. It does outline the methods, the various methods that the city could use to special assess a project. But overall, it, it follows state law in the process.
And we need a motion to approve that? Motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance 644, assessment policy. Question?
So we have seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, A through H. I guess my concern or my questions are around the use of each particular bullet point here or, or number, letter here. Where, where they would or would not apply. Can we, anyone give me any examples of where one would be appropriate as opposed to others?
I, I'm not going to give you the example, but what I'm going to tell you is you're going to rely upon your engineers and the individuals to be looking at the projects to tell you, this is the one you want to do in this project, this is the one you want to do in this project. So if you want an example of every single one, I'm going to have Brian or Tammy do that. What the ordinance is designed to do is to give you a lot of options so that your individuals who have that expertise can say, in this particular project, we should be using the interior irregular shaped lot approach because, and here's the rationale. So you have before you all of the different possibilities so that when it comes time to do an assessment project, they can say, we really think you should do F, and here's why. So if you want specific examples, Tammy or Brian are going to have to give you those examples.
That's how, who was actually having questions?
Yeah. And I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking about, about here. Are there any particular projects coming up where a special assessment is likely? And that you have an idea as to how to approach it with the assessment itself?
Yeah, the, the one that's probably going to be in front of the council that the soonest would be Ironwood, the extension of Ironwood. And I think at this point in time, DGR is recommending the area assessment, if I remember right. Because there are some fairly large parcels in there that would benefit or potentially could benefit from the assessment in the future. A lot of times, you're just going to use a linear foot assessment. But if you're dealing with large parcels, a, a area method is appropriate.
So which one would you say that would be H? Or would you say?
No. 11 points, 11.6.3.2 on page 71, down at the bottom. Yeah, H is a large parcel. It's the definition of what a large parcel consists of. But the, the methods that, that could be used to assess are from 11.63.2 to 11.64.1. So the area method would be based upon the total area of, of the property served. Wouldn't just be a front footage.
And can that be split amongst not only the property owners, but possibly others? Including ourselves?
It, yeah, it would be.
We own property.
If we own property that's adjacent to the, and even not, if it's an area method, if it's property that potentially benefits from the improvement that is, doesn't, is it contiguous to the improvement?
Because I, I don't know. I want a lot more information on this when, when time comes with Ironwood. It seems to me like the city is benefiting from expanding Ironwood as much, if not more than anyone else. So what kind of assessment is put on the residents and/or the city? I will have questions.
Yeah, and the ordinance just really, you know, sets it. And at the time that we would do a project, then that resolution necessity comes forward, and that's at the time that we need, you talk about that actual specific project. This is just the ordinance.
Right.
Setting it and following law.
Okay.
Okay. We've had a motion and a second.
Motion and second.
Yep. Take the, take the vote. All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry.
Not first reading, second reading, right time?
First reading.
Oh, it is first reading?
It's first reading.
I'm sorry, I, I kind of got lost with, I don't hear very good.
Yeah, this is the first reading of the ordinance. There'd be a second reading at the next meeting. It's up, it's up to the mayor if they want to recognize someone from the audience.
Did someone want to say something? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I thought I heard something, but I wasn't sure.
Dave Alton, 1102 North Chestnut. Does this also apply to something like the future of paving redwood in Chestnut? You could access the landowners 100% to pay for the paving of that?
It, it would be on the Chestnut Redwood project, yes.
Oh, and you could, and you can tax the adjacent landowners 100% to pay for those projects?
Correct.
Really? Thank you.
Just what I want to get more.
That, that is up to the discretion of the council.
Yes, okay. And wait till you're done.
Motion carried. Property at 303 East Elm, it's surplus property.
We closed on the neighboring property of 303 East Elm this morning, so we are in possession of it. So the question is, what would the city like to do? Would you like to declare it excess property, surplus property, and put it out for bids to be moved off-site with a tentative date of June 1st?
I, I like that idea, and depending on what we get, or the flip, if we can use, let our police and our fire use it. If we're going to demolish it anyways, let them, let them use it for training, depending if we even get any bids for, if somebody would want to move it off.
Yep, so at this point in time, if you want to declare it surplus property and with a value of more than 500, we'll advertise it for sale.
I know I asked this question before, but is it something that we could rent out?
I'll give you the same answer I gave you before. I'm not sure being a landlord is a good thing, a, a good function of the city. There's some things that we do okay, and there's some things that we don't.
I mean, what I'm asking, I guess, more so than anything is, is it a rentable piece of property?
I haven't been in it. I didn't get over there yet today. Theoretically, I think it would be. I'm just not sure we want to get in the landlord business.
I'm not sure that we do either, but we could hire someone that does do rental property leasing and such. And I'm not proposing that we definitely do it. I'm just saying that it could be an option.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, I think I'd like some sort of an assessment on it from, from city staff or even an outside realtor or something, maybe.
The only thing I'd caution is just to remind council that you have a lot of eviction issues with landlord tenant issues. So if the city is desiring to use this property anytime soon, and I don't know what the purpose of it is, if you have a tenant in there, you're not necessarily going to be able to get them out right away.
How much notice would we legally have to give to the?
The landlord tenant? I mean, they can go on six months to try and get somebody evicted. It's not a quick, easy process necessarily.
I'm just, all I'm asking is, is it a feasible?
I'm not sure that, the time that we want to remove that home off that property that, to put money in agreements and all that too, I'm just not sure it's worth the money to do that.
Why don't, why don't you just go in and take a look at it and bring it back next time? And I, I, I don't really want to be a renter, rent, renter, renty? Landlord, thank you. But to coverage act's concerns.
Okay, we'll table that item. Move on to, pardon? Sidewalk exemption request at 100 East Birchwood.
The potential property owner for that property, Adam Long. Is, is Mr. Long here? Good. He's requesting an exemption for this requirement to put sidewalk along Sioux, which is the west property, or west side of his property. I gave you a copy of minutes from 1998 where at that point in time, the city council did not install sidewalk along Sioux during the Sioux Boulevard reconstruction or construction project. And the motion was, if I can find it. Yep. Reconstruct project originally Park Edition of Park Street on the east side of Sioux Boulevard. Until, they're waiving the, the construction until such time the council determines the need. The assessment will remain the same as indicated in Resolution of Necessity Number 4398. But when sidewalks are installed, they will be financed with city funds.
So quick clarification. So the, on page 82, he would complete it on Birchwood?
Correct.
The sidewalk there. And then at whatever date the city wants to, we can go in and put Sioux on at our expense?
Correct.
To finish that, so both sides would be sidewalked? Okay.
Correct.
Can I add one thing to that on that side, just quickly? There's electrical boxes that run that side.
So I'm Adam Long, and so I'm looking to buy this lot from my parents and move them off the farm and move them into Brandon. But those are utility boxes that are, that are there, I'm okay with now. I'm going to be able to hopefully, you know, do some form of a fence and then be able to kind of block some of that view. The difficult side on my end, if we were required to put that sidewalk in, or even with you guys paying for it, I want to make sure that it doesn't have to go on the east side of those boxes because it'll literally cut through my backyard. But if you run them on the roadside, the curb side, it's going to get very close to the road as well. So I just want to clarify that the house directly behind that lot is one of the homes that was moved in, and is grandfathered in and does not have to put sidewalk in. From my understanding, you guys would be able to, to, please verify, don't shake your head. Well, and then, in order to do that, it would have to be their fence removed, the trees removed. I mean, there would be a lot of things that would have to be done. That was my understanding. Should obviously be able to understand it better. I just want to make sure that I'm not going to have to run a sidewalk on the inside of my, between my yard and those electrical boxes. Otherwise, I'm not interested, and I'll purchase a different lot. If that, if I can have that word from you guys and that's documented. If that, if I can have that word from you guys, and that's documented, that it would be between the curb and the electrical boxes, not the electric boxes in my house, then I'd be good for that.
Yeah, Tammy, what, what would happen there and that, I mean, I'm not saying, I like the Birchwood, and I'm not saying if the city is ready to do the whole Sioux on that side, but that is, in my opinion, possibility, right? I mean, I don't know how near in the future, but it's a good possibility, so would it ever cut in that far east to his lot, or would it always go closer?
Eventually, we would have to require it, um, but those utility boxes can be moved. So, yeah, the city standard right now is that we place sidewalks one foot on the street side of the property line. So the trees most likely would need to be removed, but those utility boxes can be moved, and we've done that in a lot of our re, street reconstruction projects.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Okay, so really, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect him, because that's those neighbors behind him with the trees, and any of those utilities, we would move over and still be able to put a sidewalk in?
Yeah.
Okay, utilities would move them, okay, perfect.
If we own a project, and it would be a city project, you know, unless the council decided to do something different, but based upon the ninety-eight minutes, the city would undertake that, the sidewalk as a city project. And then, we could request those utilities to move those boxes out of our way.
Are they required to by agreement to remove the boxes and at no cost to us?
Correct, yeah.
They are, they're in our right of way, so we own the property, it's not an easement that we gave them, they share our right of way, we can have them move their infrastructure at their cost for our project.
Okay, so then what about the property to the north of, of Mr. Long? What requirements can we, or are, how could we get a sidewalk in there too? Cause that's, both, both lots need sidewalks, period, but.
If, if and when the city council decides to install sidewalks on Sioux, we would undertake that as a project, as far as the fence or the trees, you know, without a survey prior to the construction project, I don't know if they're in the right of way or not. You know, the, looking on the GIS map at the county, those, those property lines typically are off a little bit. If they're not on the city right of way, we would need to obtain a temporary construction easement to build a sidewalk on that property. Just like we do, you know, on most of our projects.
I guess I'm curious how, how that property, when they, when they built that home there, how it was even allowed not to have a sidewalk there?
Because of the motion, because of the minutes from nineteen ninety-eight, that the city council waived the sidewalk requirement, and if the sidewalk is going to go in, the city will pay for it. On Sioux, on the east side of Sioux, that was action by the city council in nineteen ninety-eight.
Did you have a sidewalk on the front of the house?
Go ahead.
So, at this point, uh, is there a motion to approve?
I'd move to approve the sidewalk exemption.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the sidewalk exemption request at one hundred East Birchwood.
I would have one request though, going forward, I don't know when that would be, I'm kind of curious though how much it would cost, like, you know, I don't know if we do the budget again next year, just to kind of see how much would it cost us to do? I just feel like there's a lot of traffic, I went and got my kids the other day from school and with intermediate school in Robert Venice, I feel like a lot of kids go up and down, and I think it would benefit from, especially the other side being more developed now, to have sidewalks on both. So I would be curious, I don't know what that would be at budget time, Tammy, Brian, did this, I'm, I'm curious on a cost estimate for Sioux.
If, if, if the council's interested in installing sidewalks on the east side of Sioux, that can be taken up during the CIP review process in the spring.
In the spring? Yeah, I would be inter, I don't know if they have any vows, but I'd be interested. To at least see.
I'd like to see it on the list.
Does, there's a lot more kids going up and down those streets, especially for new developments?
Sure.
With that, we are working through that bike and pedestrian plan, and we have that public meeting on Wednesday at Park Board.
Okay.
Um, that's the very first one, um, there is an interactive map on our website too, where you can drop pins and make those recommendations, so hopefully, people use that tool, and we can put those cost estimates and everything into that report.
What time and what's it?
Five thirty.
Okay.
Here in this room.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second to approve the sidewalk exemption, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
I have a second sidewalk exemption request at four oh one East Cairo Place.
I would move to approve this one as well.
Joe, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request of four oh one East Cairo, questions?
I do, why, I don't know, I just feel like we always fight with this with sidewalks. Why would we not want that sidewalk go through if everyone else has a sidewalk in front of their house, why would we not?
Go ahead. It, it dead ends into a private parcel, into a lot, uh, that's why I put in the resolution, that if the lot to the west is developed at some point in time, sidewalk would need to be installed onto the, the parcel that's requesting the exemption. But right now, it dead ends, it doesn't go anywhere.
Well, I live in a, a neighborhood, there's a lot of empty lots, and there's houses that, even though they're dead lots on the other side of them, they're just dead end, there's nothing there, they still have to do a sidewalk. I just feel like we fight with sidewalks all the time.
Correct.
And I'm like, if we can get them in when they're supposed to be in.
The, the difference is you live in a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
So the sidewalk goes all the way around the cul-de-sac, and when those houses get built, the sidewalk will be constructed, because the sidewalk eventually will go all the way around the cul-de-sac. This doesn't go anywhere, it just stops, and it stops at, in the middle of a private parcel. That, I can't say it's never going to be developed, but it may or may not be developed in the future. If it is developed in the future and something is platted off and it's, and they have to put a sidewalk in, then this sidewalk would need to be completed.
At the owner's expense?
Correct.
And that goes with if somebody buys a house, if it changes ownership, like that's, I'm just curious, I.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Because it does seem like sometimes we're not super consistent, Tammy, do you have an opinion on this one? Uh, I can see giving them an exception for the sidewalk that goes all the way to the west property line, but right now, they have that sidewalk with their carriage walk, that carriage walk is actually going into that curb ramp. So when the lot across the street to the north gets developed, they'll be required to put in the sidewalk, and then we won't have that companion ramp for across the street, which they were not meeting ADA standards. So, they really should extend that from their driveway to that carriage walk, and then put in that companion ramp, or that ADA ramp. After that, it could be an exception to the property line.
So, it's almost, even though it's not like a cul-de-sac circle, almost essentially it's acting like one until if that ever gets developed, to make sure that both sides of the street can connect?
Right, that carriage walk actually goes down into a curb cut right now, and that curb cut was there for a ramp, an ADA ramp, and they're not meeting that standard. And that was approved with their preliminary plans and their development engineering plans, so developers are all aware that that should be a, an ADA ramp and not a carriage walk. There's nothing saying that that carriage walk can't connect into that ADA ramp, but it's not constructed correctly. This would need tweak to do what you're talking about doing then, right?
The exemption that's included in the resolution is just what the property owner requested for the west forty-seven feet and, and, it's not an exact measure, but I think that carriage ramp, because that carriage walk is not in that forty-seven feet. So, to extend it, it would still need to. Do you agree to that? Looks like you had a comment there.
Um, as long as it's clear that they need to extend that to their carriage walk and put in the ADA ramp.
So I was up there this afternoon, or, or this morning, and, uh, get some mess right back there, got the drainage going through there, uh, I don't know how we're gonna eventually fix it all, but.
So could we tweak this and bring it back the next meeting? I guess I'm a little reluctant to just say, we'll tell them how it needs to be done and give them a document that says different.
So we do have a motion and a second.
Yeah, you can, you can have a subsequent motion to table or till the next.
I'll make that motion to see.
A motion and a second to table the exemption request at four oh one East Cairo, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Moving on to medical cannabis South Dakota rule changes on, Brian?
Mayor, I like, I'm recusing myself from this topic, please.
Okay.
Um, one of the things that was discussed quite a bit when we adopted our medical cannabis licensing regulations was the requirement that a medical cannabis facility had to be in a standalone building unless it's in a building with another medical cannabis business. The state, um, in mid to late September, I believe, adjusted that requirement, uh, that was one of their requirements at the time. They've since changed that, um, and they've added the language, this section shall not be interpreted to prohibit shared access from parking lot, walkway, concourse, or other area generally open to the public as part of a shopping center or business park if allowed by the unit of local government. So, the question had been strip malls. Would medical cannabis facilities be allowed in a strip mall? Under a current, under the old proposed or, or rules from the state and our current ordinance, no, they would not, it would have to be a standalone facility. Under this, it's up to the local unit of government, which means we would need to amend our medical cannabis ordinance to allow it.
I'm, I'm okay with that, I don't know what we need to do, but.
Well, we need to, we need to go through the ordinance process, which is two readings.
Well.
Adoption in twenty days afterwards, it becomes effective, so if, if we put it draft in front of you at the November first, and then the November fifteenth meeting, it would get published, uh, the twenty-third, it would go into effect, uh, the middle of December.
Afraid we may see other changes on this particular subject over the next
Probably.
six months to a year or so, and I agree with Barb, I don't see anything wrong with it, but I think we should do that.
So if, if, if the council is agreeable, we, we can draft an ordinance for consideration at the next meeting.
Do you need some sort of a motion?
Yeah, if you want a motion to direct us to do it, that'd be awesome.
I'd need to.
Yeah.
I'll just have it before you go.
Let's do that.
So, are we gonna have to do this every time the state changes their mind?
Yep.
We'll, we'll bring it up, and then it's going to be up to you, the council, if you want to change it to comply with or, or conform with state law. This instance, you don't have to, you could, you could keep your ordinance the same, and each medical cannabis establishment would be in a standalone building.
We talked about that, and we felt that was pretty restrictive and cost prohibitive, so I, I like this, but this is government at its best, Jack.
So I think, I think we're asking, Brian, that, that you do, do do that and, uh, bring, bring the change in ordinance.
So, just, just one ramification, our ordinance is in place, which means somebody could apply for a medical cannabis license now if they wanted to, and I've had six or eight inquiries, um, from anywhere, from cultivation to dispensary. What I can tell them now is that we are reconsidering this, and it would probably behoove the applicant to wait until, uh, the new ordinance is adopted.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, uh, we have a tentative, uh, timeline, very subject to change on the involuntary annexation process.
Yep, we, we've been getting some questions as to when, you know, this will be moving forward. The study will be presented to the city council at the December sixth council meeting, and then everything after that is up for council action. But we have some timeframes in there as far as mailings and publications have to be met, so assuming that the council would move forward with, uh, a resolution of intent at December twentieth, which is up to the council, that's the timeframe that it would take place in.
So, once we've had the, considered the study though, we, we have some time if we so choose to.
Correct, the only, the only timeframe that you have to comply with is sixty days from the resolution of intent to, you must take action
Sure.
on the resolution of annexation, that's the only timeframe that you have to do legally.
Okay.
Mainly, you guys just put this together for us and for everyone, just to kind of, again, we haven't seen the study, so once there, we see it and even know what even comes back to say, it just kind of gives everybody an understanding of what kind of timeline there would be, and these dates obviously would change depending on if we even go through with it?
Correct.
Or if we decide to prolong it.
Correct.
So I do want to thank you guys, um, the staff for putting this together, because I think it's great, we're being more proactive than reactive, so at least we have some idea of when the dates are coming, if we even decide to go down that route, once we see the study, because we don't know, right?
Correct.
I don't like the dates.
Thank you. Uh, Streets work report on page nine.
Can I make a quick question?
Yes.
Sorry. Uh, my name's Jess Elson, I live at eleven oh four North Chestnut, I had the pleasure of talking annexation with Tammy when I was selling art, uh, and I, thank you. Because you know what, she engaged with me and spoke to me and answered questions, and you know what, maybe I was a little excitable about it, it's best me, that's great. But she mentioned in there that there, you guys are not looking to annex my farm, and I was curious, like, cool, can I get that in writing?
I'll, I'll be honest with you, until I see the study, I, I'd have to plead pretty dumb.
Sure. I just, I mean, but why does she think you guys aren't annexing my farm?
I stated that it would be council's decision on if they annex in your farm, that it is, it does look kind of funny on the map, because we're not proposing to go past the intersection very far.
Yeah.
We still have to prove that there would be benefit to your property, that's something that will be brought before council with the study.
I think Jess, the best thing right now is let's get the study and, and we'll all very reasonably sit down and discuss it.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Fun night, guys.
Thank you. Uh, work report, wage adjustment, Matt Brown. Is, anything ever, Brian?
Uh, just a reminder, Matt's, Matt's on military leave, but this is to, to keep him up to speed, this is for work that was completed last year.
Motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Matt Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Wage adjustment also for Jeremy Olson. A motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Mr. Olson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Water and sewer, Westside sanitary sewer project, Geotech contract for geotechnical exploration.
If you remember, this is under design with DGR Engineering, they're bringing those plans up to sixty percent, um, we'll talk about that some more later on in the agenda, but this is just so Geotech can go out there and take a couple soil, soil borings, so that we know what types of soils are out there.
North, this is the north side of Holly, okay, yeah. Motion and a second to approve the Westside sanitary sewer project, questions?
Yep, one quick one. Okay, here we go again, we're hiring DGR to design the project, correct?
Yes, we are, yeah.
Again, why, why can't we put this out to, why, again, why can't we put this out to bid to two or three other, one or two, three other engineering firms that are fully capable of designing? And all we want is a quote from these design firms, um, for what they expect, um, to charge us.
So these are professional services, and so we don't bid out professional services, I do work very closely with the consultants and ask them for costs. I did go back and forth on this consultant, just because we have another sewer main that's going to Sioux Falls, and that design is with HDR. We do have a professional services policy that we've been following for selections, um, we can certainly talk about that and re-bring that up, at the first of the year, we'll, um, approve the ten consultants that we normally use, or that I recommend to the council to use. But this design has already been approved, so we're not approving the proposal to do the design, this is just the proposal with Geotech.
I know, but we run into this cycle every time, and then, uh, so we approve DGR, DGR's a fine firm, I've worked with them many times, um, but we approve them. But we approve them to do the design. They do the design, they take it all the way to the bid process and we award a bid to the lowest bidder and then, then we hire the same company to do the construction and administration. And invariably, they have basically an open checkbook as soon as they get awarded the first contract.
And I don't agree with that because I do work with the consultants and there's been many projects where we've talked about the project and then they give a cost and then we go back to the drawing board on that cost. That's, just because they give us a proposal doesn't mean that I put it in front of you and tell I'm comfortable with their hours and what they're spending it on. We break that proposal down into tasks and then they put down hours for each one of those tasks and they also put down their employees on who they're working with. So I know the consultants pretty well.
You know, which, which engineer.
So do I. I've worked for a couple consultants. I know exactly how that process works.
I will say this, Jack. I had a conversation about this with a friend in the engineering and this is the way it's done in all cases. And he felt that what we're doing is the right way to do it. I'm just sharing with you the information I got from, from an engineering firm and felt that this is the way it should be done, that we're getting quality work, not necessarily always the cheapest. And, and so I, I guess I would concur with what Tammy's saying. This is the way it's typically done.
And, Jack, when.
Well, not always, Joe.
Typically.
Because of my experience, we did not always just take, say.
I think I'm referring to cities. This is how cities typically do it.
And when we have these proposals coming up, if you want to be more involved in that process, I can, we can certainly talk about that and I can show you that.
Well, I just feel that we, we give so much to these engineering firms, so much leeway as to what they charge after they finish the contract.
I don't think I give them much leeway at all.
Well, future contracts, what we can do is include in the proposal from the general engineer, the engineer in charge of the project. We can include geotechnical exploration costs so then they have to contract with Geotech or wherever they want to. We can include that in the proposal. And if you're upset about, we have a bid with DGR and now we've got extra costs coming from Geotech to do exploration on the project, I get, I get that. So we can include the Geotech consultant in with DGR, whoever the, the project engineer is. And then you wouldn't see this, it would be in the, in the original proposal.
Typically don't you get a Geotech assessment prior to project being designed?
Yeah, and I could have brought it forward for the proposal with DGR too. I just didn't on this one. I didn't on the east side one either.
I, I do not like this process of, and through many of these projects, the infrastructure projects and, and I feel there's a better way. So I guess I'll be kind of watching, maybe how this goes. More involvement, sure.
I would love to walk you through the process of what I do. Let's do that one afternoon.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the, the sewer project. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Big Sioux Drainage Project, Geotech Contract for Geotechnical Exploration.
Motion to approve, second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
This is under design with Infrastructure Design Group and the reason why it wasn't brought forward with their proposal was we had a lot of questions for game fish and parks on where we were going to put this pond and how we were going to put it in there and water quality issues and everything else. So we had to work through a lot of that language with them first and get their approval.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 2022 meter replacement project.
Looking to move forward with the, the project. The primary area is the core area. We're looking at about 700 meters. We'd advertise October 27th and November 3rd, bid opening on November 9th to be put on the council agenda for action at the next council meeting.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the meter replacement project?
Sorry?
Motion and a second to approve the water meter replacement project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a change order on the Rushmore Project. Anything there, Tammy?
This change order has two items. One is for paying tax on our cluster unit boxes, those mailboxes that the post office wants us to start using on these street reconstruction projects. And then the other one is kind of a big ordeal. It's liquidated damages. The contractor was not meeting their deadlines. That was in the contract. And so there are 26 days of $1,000 a day. So this is a credit to us for $25,712.
I was thinking you all would be scrambling to make that motion. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Does that cover both items four and five?
No, just.
No, just four. Okay. Let me get, so we get another 25 grand?
No.
Oh. Rushmore Project Pay Application. I guess we've got to pay our bills now.
It's a little bit bigger than 25.
I see that.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the payment on the Rushmore Project. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Water Tower Project Pay Application. Drive by there, it's going up.
Move to approve.
Every day. We have a motion
Second.
and a second to approve the Water Tower Project Pay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Page 125, we have Encore Park Petition for Improvements. You guys have sat here patiently all night.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
This is requesting the city to move forward with the Westside Trunk Sewer. What we're asking the council to do now is authorize DGR to complete plans and get it ready for bids since it's where it's 60%.
Right.
We have 60% plans. We're already under the proposal to do final design up to bidding it with DGR. So this would be finishing up their contract and getting it ready.
I would make a motion to approve if they did that side open up even though it's going to be expensive.
A motion and a second to approve the Encore Park Petition for Improvements. Any other questions? And Barb is exactly right. We do, it will be expensive, but someday there will be a future council that thanks you. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do, Dana does have one item under new business, Brian, that I asked her just to, it's very brief.
Yep. So we heard earlier from some residents that were really concerned about parking and bright lights going up out in their neighborhood. I've had a resident reach out to me a couple of times in the last 13, 14 months who has that, that exact complaint. And I'm not really sure if this is a, a school thing or a city thing. Maybe it's the city advocate for the resident to the school thing. There's a resident that lives behind the tennis courts between the Lutheran Church and the middle school who looks at extremely bright tennis lights. Just picture, every night until 11 o'clock PM. He has no problem with them being used and illuminated, but his concern is, and he's claimed that he's brought this concern up numerous times, when they're not being used. They're still taking electricity and just illuminating into his home and his neighbor's home. He said that there used to be a, like a switch where players would go push a button and there'd be a time clock and the lights would go according to that versus just always on seven days a week until 11 o'clock. So I, I know he's very frustrated and he couldn't be here tonight, so I did tell him that I would bring it up on our new business and see if there was something that, that we could do.
Is that a school, Brian, or?
Yes.
Can we at least share that with the school? And let's go from there.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add here that the softball and baseball night was, lights getting left on overnight more often when they need to be, that's for sure. But I'm assuming that's association stuff.